Do, does anyone have any questions or any changes to our 5:00 PM agenda? All right, we will proceed as posted for 5:00 PM. Before we jump into the staff updates, I do want to give a quick shout out to the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, Buncombe County Parks and Rec, our EMS and port teams, as well as the Buncombe County Fire Marshal, probably leaving off some folks, and also a huge thank you to Target and Walmart in Ingalls. I spent probably the happiest two hours I could have on Saturday at the Sheriff's Office trunk or treat with hundreds of kids dressed in costumes coming by to trick or treat, complete with Deputy Cora and Chase from Paw Patrol. They did a fantastic job making that event really special for a whole lot of kids and families in Buncombe County. And I just want to say thank you to those county offices and staff for making such a memorable Saturday afternoon. I'm pretty sure I haven't smiled for two hours straight in some time. So thanks to, to you all. All right, we'll go ahead and jump into our staff updates. And Mr. Joyner is on the agenda first for a discussion about our second meeting in December schedule.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. I think we're going to pull up the meeting schedule that was passed in the past beginning of the year in January. And we potentially always or usually cancel the second meeting in December. So we want to kind of refer y'all to that and see if that is something that y'all want to do. We always have the ability to call a special meeting if needed. If we do cancel that second meeting in December, I just want to touch bases and make sure that, that is okay.
I'm supportive.
Supportive? All right, I think we're, we are set to keep that meeting canceled.
All right, and also I want to call attention to, just for the public, our first meeting in December will be actually that Monday, the fifth, instead of the sixth. It is the organizational meeting for any new commissioners that are elected, so. Want to bring that to the attention as well.
All right, so December 5th at 5:00 PM.
Correct. And typically, the schedule is, we will swear in the new commissioners at the briefing. And then by the start of the five o'clock meeting, the new commissioners can be seated as such.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, on the December 5th, we will have the swearing in at three or at four?
Typically, that's what we've done. We've done it at three. We can move it to four if we're just going to do the swearing in. But typically, we've had it at the briefing. I don't know if we'll have any additional agenda items, but we can make that clarification as well as that gets closer.
So we'll hold three o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Joyner. All right, we have our residential waste collection and diversion study presentation. And Dane Peterson, our solid waste director is with us.
Good afternoon, commissioners. How are y'all doing? So, we're here to talk trash. Always got to get that one in, right? And recycling too, we're going to hit that as well. But before we dive in, I want to brag on a couple of our team members here today. Kristy Smith, our solid waste manager, just had her 15-year milestone last month. So, congratulations, Kristy. Be hard to quantify all the successful projects, process improvements, and just all the great work that Kristy's done in 15 years with the county, so. Cassie Lowmeyer, our recycle coordinator, has made certainly significant impact in her first year and a half with the county. Just to name a few, recycling education and outreach, working to install county campus recycling, implementing an award-winning compost drop-off program, construction and demolition material recycling outreach, like I said, just to name a few. We look forward to seeing results of these efforts moving forward. So as promised, we're here to discuss outcomes of a recent waste audit and diversion study. Alongside, alongside of our consultant, Kristy and Cassie have done a, a good job in analyzing the character, characteristics, characteristics of our waste stream and identifying some potential diversion opportunities. So with that said, Cassie's going to start us off with the waste audit process.
Good afternoon. As Dane said, I am here to discuss the results of the waste characterization study. You may sometimes hear me refer to this as our waste audit. They're one and the same. So I wanted to frame this presentation in our, with our project goal in mind, which was to identify and assess potential opportunities to divert waste from landfill disposal in order to both extend the county's landfill life and also to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So these were two pillars that we designed and implemented this study on. Just a quick overview of what I will be discussing throughout the presentation. I wanted to outline some sample methods and study design so you all really gain a deep understanding of how this audit was conducted. I wanted to review the collected data and results of the audit. This was conducted at the Buncombe County Transfer Station. I'm going to do a bit of an analysis of different material streams that we gathered data from, comparing Buncombe County metrics to similar counties within the study, and also discuss where we go from here. And that will be during the second presentation, Kristy will talk about the waste diversion study. So, just to give you a little bit of background on the methodology of the waste audit, we did a manual sort and also a visual sort. I say we, the study was actually conducted by SCS engineers throughout the last week in April 2022, so April 25th to April 29th. So over this week, 45 samples were collected. The, it was about 200 pounds per sample. And we really wanted to capture four main material streams. In the unincorporated Buncombe County area, we wanted to make sure and capture residential and commercial data. And then our largest municipality, the city of Asheville, we, we wanted to ensure that we captured the residential and commercial streams of that municipality as well. These samples were hand sorted into one of 35 material categories. You will see the six main material categories on the right in the waste audit report that those six categories are broken down even further into subcategories. I just didn't include that massive table in this presentation. The second method we used is the bulky slash self-haul sort. And these, this sorting method was used for loads that were too bulky or heavy to sort by hand. Instead, we did a visual inspection and estimated the volume of waste. So as you can imagine, these, this method was reserved for the material categories like yard waste or lumber, drywall, window glass, things that, you know, hand sorting is not effective, would not be an effective method. This is kind of a graphic of how exactly the audit was, oh, the audit was conducted. So on the left, you see a picture of our commercial tipping floor at the Buncombe County Transfer Station. So this picture is taken from the gravel area just directly across that tipping, tipping floor, and that is where the audit was staged all week. Samples were collected at the discretion of the sampling team from SCS, and they were brought over by our county staff in a skid steer, the bottom left picture. It was then dumped into a series of collection bins, top center. And each of those bins were then brought over to the sorting table where they were manually sorted by the sorters under this tent to the right. So these are, this is a summary of the results that were found in this study. As you can see, organics in green, paper in beige, and plastics in blue make up over 70% of waste across Buncombe County. And those are within the four main material stream, or four main collection streams. Asheville Residential, Buncombe County Residential, Asheville Commercial, and Buncombe County Commercial. The data also suggests that residential groups also dispose a higher proportion of plastics and yard waste. So as a reminder, plastics are in blue and yard waste is in this yellow. Commercial waste in Asheville comprises a higher proportion of paper, so that's beige. Commercial waste from Buncombe County, from unincorporated Buncombe comprises the highest proportion of organics. And construction and demolition materials comprise higher proportions of the waste stream generated in Asheville. And obviously, that's consistent, consistent with the construction boom that we are seeing. And Kristy will definitely elaborate on in her, in the waste diversion study presentation. I wanted to break down the residential, or I wanted to break down recyclables and compostables in each, each waste stream. And as a reminder, I'm talking about the recyclables that were found in the trash. We did not audit the recycling stream that we are collecting. We only focused on the recyclables that were found in the garbage can. So, all in all, paper is making up nearly half of the recyclables from residential routes. And keep in mind, this data is, is from the county and the city overall. So this is an average. Plastics are comprising about a quarter. And really what this graph is telling us is that the county is able to divert 20% of its waste material with infrastructure already in place, because we have the infrastructure for recycling. It's just not being fully utilized. And obviously, that 20% is with 100% recyclable diversion. So we have, we have plenty of infrastructure to divert recyclables. Commercial recyclables is similar. Paper comprises over half of the commercial recyclables. Plastics is going to make up about one-fifth of that commercial waste stream again. And the county is, is again able to reduce commercial waste automatically by 20% with this existing infrastructure in place. I just wanted to mention that this other divertibles category is, it includes clothing, electronics, and some household hazardous, hazardous waste. So these are divertible, these are recycling, or these are recyclables that are, have the potential to be diverted. They're just not able to be diverted curbside. But we do have program, we have clothing, we have textile recycling programs in place. We have electronics and household hazardous waste programs in place. Now looking at the compostables category. This is for residential, and the overwhelming majority of compostables in the waste stream are food scraps, about 60%. So solid waste is increasing access to the residential compost, community compost drop-off sites by adding more locations for residents to drop off their food waste. But as we expand, we will need to fortify that infrastructure. Obviously, this is a huge, it's, this is a huge category in the waste stream that we would, would like to be focusing on. And Kristy will discuss that more in her waste diversion study presentation as well. Commercially, we see a mirror of the residential results. Almost 70% of compostables are food scraps, so that is significantly higher proportion of commercial compostables than residential. And the majority of this waste stream is coming from restaurants and grocery stores, which I think is really important information for us to have moving forward as we design and implement some of these diversion programs for compostable material in the county. Part of the waste audit was benchmarking Buncombe County against other similar counties. So SCS engineers decided to compare our data that was gathered with Orange County, North Carolina, and Boulder County, Colorado. You can see the population and annual waste tonnages on the top left table. You can also see our comparison of waste in the graph on the right. So I would just wanted to highlight a couple of, of interesting things that we see in this graph. The recyclable materials are fairly consistent across counties. And I apologize, the recyclables are actually in green at the bottom. So we're all fairly similar in, in our recycling. Boulder County, however, is leading the way in compostable diversion, which is in beige. And so that is the third and rightmost bar graphs. And this is actually due to a robust organics diversion program that Boulder has in place. So we see the effect of organics management programs in this graph. Buncombe and Boulder have similar, have smaller percentages of divertibles making up their material collection stream, so about 60%. And just to note that although we are comparing ourselves to these two counties, Boulder and Orange receive revenue from tax bill, whereas we are an enterprise fund. So just to, just to touch on the waste diversion presentation, this audit kind of tells us, it gives us some diversion opportunities. This data is really helpful. And for residential diversion opportunities, we're looking, you know, to focus on compostable organics, recyclable paper, compostable paper, and recyclable plastics. And these are actually broken up into existing curbside programs that we already have and that we might just need to build upon or strengthen these programs and, or increase access to these programs. And then we also, you know, the other, in teal or green, that denotes the existing drop-off programs that we have. So the food waste and yard waste programs, we, we offer drop-off for those. Commercial compostable organics was a huge one. Recyclable paper, compostable paper, and recyclable plastics have, are the biggest streams that have the potential for, for the most impact for our diversion numbers in the county. That is actually it for my presentation, and I'm going to hand it over to Kristy unless anyone has any questions.
Well, I think you have an event coming up too around the compostables, don't you? You want to share?
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. We do have a event coming up on Saturday, November 5th. It is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it is a one-year celebration of our, of the inception of our community compost drop-off program that we have partnered with the county, or with the city on implementing and expanding in Asheville and Buncombe County. There will be free compost, so bring your own bucket. There will also be free compost totes, so collection totes for, to put on your kitchen counter to collect those food scraps in and bring them to the drop-off sites. There will be free snacks, kids, or kids activities, demonstrations, educational material, and general fun. And that is at Lucy S. Herring Elementary's school garden. So please come out and have a good time with us.
Any other questions? Not right now. All right, thanks, Cassie.
Thank you.
How are you, Kristy?
Hi, everybody. Good to see you. Let's talk about some waste diversion opportunities. So what I'd like to do is just, again, reiterate our project goal, current programs we have in place, and then some potential initiatives we're hoping to try to, to roll out. So again, we wanted to identify and assess potential and opportunities to divert waste from the landfill to extend the life of the landfill. We have always worked really hard to extend the life of landfill and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So current diversion programs, Cassie highlighted a lot of those, but this data is driven by our programs. So we have a curbside recycling program that's essentially Waste Pro in all of our unincorporated Buncombe County residents. We have our two drop-off centers, one at the transfer station, one at the landfill. And we also have our food scrap drop-offs. So those are our community compost drop-offs, and then we have one at the landfill. And we also do special waste collections, TVs, paint, electronics, pesticides, light bulbs. That's what we call our special waste category. And these are all the programs we have in place, it's, that Cassie highlighted earlier. So all those programs, how much waste does that mean we diverted from the landfill last year? So all of those categories are combined into this graph. Curbside is your Waste Pro tonnages. We got a scrap tire program, yard waste program, our drop-off centers, cardboard, special waste. We have a CND diversion program as well for clean block and brick. So that's the CND category for the other. We have a commercial cardboard, that's mostly Waste Pro's commercial customers, and then special waste. So all of that, we diverted 16,840 tons fiscal year of '22. So how much waste did we get rid of in fiscal year 2022? 321,917 tons. About a third of that went out of county to other facilities. That's pretty typical for our county historically. Typically, it's usually half, so we're at a third this last time. And those are mostly your commercial and industrial customers within the county. And then the waste that came to our municipal landfill was a little under 136,000. And then we have the CND landfill, a little under 89,000 tons. So all of that gives us a diversion rate of 7%, and that's accounting for the county facilities that were disposed of for county waste, and then the diversion tonnages from the graph previously. So for the study, we wanted to focus on a few focus areas. There's a lot of directions you can go. So we chose these five. Organics management was the obvious one from the waste audit. We have CND debris that's pretty substantial in the county, so we wanted to look at that. The multifamily commercial sector, what can we do to, to try to help divert there? And then data collection and enforcement and convenience center sites. So those were our five focus areas. And I'll dive in briefly into each of those. The first two will be the ones we focus on the most, because they did have the, the biggest impact in the waste stream. So Cassie's presentation had percentages, and this has been translated into tonnages. This is the world we work in, so this is what this means to us for the compostable materials. 100% compostable materials is a little under 50,000 tons. And then we break that down into the separate subcategories. And so when we're looking at trying to divert more and have a higher diversion rate, we wanted to look at what that meant for organics. So if we were to chomp out 5% of that organics, what does that mean overall? That's a 9.2% impact on our overall rate and approximately 2,400 additional tons that we would need to divert. And organics processing options, there are several of them. They kind of go in order. There's, there's four total. They go in order of, you know, the smallest and the easiest, to least expensive, to the most expensive. Windrow composting is, is an obvious one. That's where most of you might be familiar. They're out turning piles of mulch. There's typically a large land requirement for that. And then the other technology is an aerated static pile, so the footprint is much smaller. You don't have to turn those piles. They actually get air injected into them, so that reduces the need for all that space to turn. And then you get the more expensive technologies, in-vessel composting and anaerobic digestion. So what does that mean for our greenhouse gases? The composting is actually more greenhouse gas friendly than the anaerobic digestion, mostly due to the energy input needed for the anaerobic digestion process. So this would be the impact we would have locally on greenhouse gas impacts. This does take into account our current landfill where we're destroying greenhouse gases with our landfill gas-to-energy project, so this would be in addition to that. So next steps for us, what we were thinking of for organics management is we want to continue Cassie's great work on, work on expanding the community compost drop-offs. We have a plan for some more of those to come online. We want to continue supporting startup of our county compost ambassador program. We've got a lot of compost going on in the county campus that we want to keep pushing. And we want to investigate implementing a pilot ASP out at the landfill so we can look at some budget numbers, some grant opportunities, and some regulatory implications. And then the focus area number two was the CND debris. Our CND generation is in line with what you would expect for the amount of construction in our area. We have seen significant growth. We do expect that to continue. This is a trend line showing you what the CND waste has been doing over the last couple of years. It has definitely increased. And the total diverted is that clean brick and block program that we have for recycling at the landfill. And where do we want to go next steps with CND? What we'd really like to do is, Cassie's actually worked really hard on developing an informational packet for contractors that are demoing, so we want to expand on that and get that readily available so they know some options they have for diverting material prior to demoing. And same on the side with the permitting side with contractors. We kind of want to work with other departments in the county to try to pursue what that might look like on the front end for their permit process. And again, we want to encourage CND loads to the landfill so you can recycle all that material instead of bringing it to the transfer station and, and let it go to the landfill. And we do have the reduced tip fees at the landfill for that source-separated material. We want to promote that some more. And then the third focus area was multifamily commercial. This typically lags behind for recycling diversion simply because of accessibility. A lot of apartment complexes may or may not plan for having a footprint for recycling in their disposal areas. So we want to try to help plan for sufficient capacity moving forward and work with our partners in planning on perhaps getting in on the front end of permitting some of those new sites to try to capture some extra space. And the multilingual distribution, we have a, a great packet and informational flyers out. We just have struggled with distribution, so we want to work at strengthening that. And on the commercial side, same, same kind of idea. We want to allow our commercial customers a chance to know some diversion opportunities. You know, what are their recycling options out there? And then look at enforcing a cardboard recycling ordinance. It's been on the books for quite some time. And then again, develop a recycling guide to help, help them know where they can go to recycle. Do I need to speed up? I have a timer. Are we good? I heard the bling. Good, okay. Focus area number four was the data collection and enforcement. We want to continue collecting data. Data, data, data is our friend. We can benchmark ourselves and how we're doing, so we want to continue to do that. We, we want to branch out a little bit more with our haulers and local recycling companies to see if they're capturing some tonnages perhaps that we're not counting or able to count. And keep a tab on our recycling contamination rates. We know how our community is doing. You know, with the wish cycling, just because you throw it in the recycle bin doesn't mean you're helping. And then the per capita waste generation, that's part of our strategic plan goals. So we want to keep a close eye on our per capita waste. And again, the CND material tonnages, we really want to focus on that commercial cardboard ordinance. And our fifth, fifth focus area was the convenience centers. We didn't spend a lot of time on this. We're pursuing this focus area separately throughout the county. So we just have a few obvious bullets here of considering, you know, central location, prioritizing locations that might not be adequately served by curbside or any other programs we have. And then we want to certainly staff those convenience centers. And wrapping up here, I did provide a timeline of where we're looking to go with some of these programs and ideas. They're all in the one to three-year timeframe aside from, you know, perhaps the requirement to divert on contractors. But in general, one to three years for most, all of these focus areas and initiatives. And that was really all I had. So I'm happy to take questions.
Kristy, thank you. This was great. Can you tell us a bit more about what happens when items get diverted? Where do they go and what? Where do they go and what becomes of them?
Good question, yes. So there's a lot of different programs out there. That is actually why we're struggling with the organics. There's not a big processing firm or company around that processes large amounts. Danny's Dumpster is a local grassroots guy that typically handles all the organics now. We partner with him currently. We plan to continue that. But, you know, TVs, electronics, go to a separate recycler. They're certified in the state to make sure that those are recycled appropriately and correctly. So they're not getting shipped overseas or end up in the ocean or anything like that. So it just depends on, on the material itself.
Any other questions for Kristy?
Well, I just want to say thank you so much. I'm excited that we're, that you're really digging into the diversion. I think it's very important that we're looking at that. So I'm excited with this good work that you're doing. And the, especially when you look at how much is currently going into our waste stream that could be diverted, it's a little, it's mind boggling actually with that. So thank you all. One thing I, I was just reading, and I'm just curious if, if you know anything about this locally. The, I was reading, I think it was in this right to repair book. And the stat was seventy percent of toxic waste electronics account for about seventy percent of toxic waste in U.S. landfills. Which is really quite startling, right? Because it's like lithium, mercury, lead. But it sounds like from what you're saying that we have a way of diverting those electronics. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am, we most certainly do. And we live in a state that's actually very proactive in that as well. We have a ban on televisions and computer monitors for those reasons. It is a landfill ban. So we're not allowed to throw those away unless there's, you know, extenuating circumstances. But yes, we have a program in place to help capture all of those that are pretty toxic.
Okay, thank you.
And the best news about a lot of those is they're have good use. You know, they go to the recycling company and they're worth money if you strip all those materials apart.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. Also want to acknowledge the tour that our solid waste team led for the North Carolina Solid Waste Association Conference last week. I got the opportunity to visit with some folks who were incredibly impressed with the diversion work and just a lot of the really incredible food composting that's happening here in Buncombe. And we're taking a lot of notes from our really incredible team. So kudos to you all. It was great to hear other folks across North Carolina looking to Buncombe County as leaders in solid waste. We appreciate y'all. It was a lot of fun, thanks. All right, I think we are ready for Tim Love and our legislative agenda and priorities discussion.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. For this afternoon's discussion on Buncombe County Commissioner's legislative agenda, I'd like to start by making a couple reintroductions. And with us virtually, we have two members of our Warden Smith team, who's our government relations firm that was appointed, hired by the county commission at our May meeting. Those are Whitney Christiansen, as well as Trachten Dinwiddie. And they're both on the screen. They're here with us. I'm going to lead our presentation today. But as you have questions for them, we can direct those questions to them directly. Or I may call on them if I need to phone a friend, so. With that said, we'll go ahead and get started. So a few slides to get us going. dreaded clicker malfunction. So background and twenty twenty-three planning. In terms of background, Warden Smith has been retained by Buncombe County. That action was taken by county commission at the May tenth meeting. During the short session in twenty twenty-two, May of twenty twenty-two, we were represented by Warden Smith and they advocated us at the general assembly on a number of issues. But in addition to just kind of focusing on specific issues for commission, they also kept their ears to the ground for anything that was of interest to the county. A few of the highlights from the twenty twenty-two short session are highlighted here. Certainly not all inclusive, but just to give you a flavor. The first up is of course the Buncombe County occupancy tax bill, which is displayed there. This is the, the bill that was passed that changes the ratio from seventy-five twenty-five to sixty-six thirty-three between hotel marketing and of course, community projects. Additionally, there were a number of items in the twenty twenty-two appropriations act where Warden Smith was able to advocate for us. A couple of those, just to name a few, are related to funding for non-certified K-12 state personnel as well as changes to affordable housing funding that favored Buncombe County. Just a couple of items. Additionally, Warden Smith helped tackle some activity that came up in the middle of the short session, unbeknownst to us, related to county's authority or local government's authority to regulate short-term rentals. And so Warden Smith worked with a coalition to, to support county and local government authority on those topics. And then one final item, also of interest to the board relates to broadband regulation and specifically the GREAT program and the expansion in that program. Just a few of the items discussed during twenty twenty-two. So twenty twenty-two, the short session, I think most thought was fairly successful for Buncombe County. And so we figured we would just piggyback on that success moving into the long session in twenty twenty-three. And so the, the long session begins in January. We're projecting at the end of January. And to prepare, prepare for that long session, county staff as well as commission have been going through a process to develop an agenda which would represent Buncombe County Commission priorities moving into that long session. The current draft that we'll review today is a draft. Emphasize that multiple times today. But developed with county commission input as well as the input of our state representatives and your department heads. The goal of today's session is really to hear from county commission. And so really want to hear from y'all today as we refine the list, talk about priorities to commission. Additionally, wanted to hear from you if there are any items that need to be moved up the list. Perhaps items that should be on the list that aren't. And of course, we'll, we'll work on wordsmithing as we proceed over the next few months. So I'm going to shift into the draft legislative agenda. As we move forward today, the presentation is broken into sections. Our first section is our tier one priorities. And these are related to policy and appropriations. And these are going to be separate items that we'll tackle separately. You of course know that a policy change is, you know, related to policy where appropriations are of course related to funding. In terms of our tier one policy priorities, those are on the screen in front of you. What we've done is we've organized these around your strategic plan. And so you can see here that we've got a handful of priorities that are scattered across three areas of our strategic plan. Again, these are policy and not appropriation priorities. I'm going to read off just a couple of them, not going to spend too much time. Definitely want to hear from y'all today. But in our educated and capable community focus area, our first priority, not in order of importance, but just on listed on the screen, relates to additional funding for early childhood education and pre-K programs, including the potential modification of subsidy formulas that impact Buncombe County. You'll also notice that there's an asterisk beside this particular item. There's a note that's very hard to read at the bottom of the slide that indicates this was also an item that was flagged by department heads as a high priority when they all met to discuss, but also potentially could be of critical importance to a department's operations. So you'll see that throughout. I'm not going to continue to call those out, but just wanted you to know what those were. Additionally, we see another priority here, again around early childhood education with a focus this time on capital expenses. So facilities, infrastructure, things of that nature. As we shift out of educated and capable into vibrant economy, there is a priority here to see changes to the occupancy tax law. And then as we shift into resident well-being, we see two priorities that are related. The first relates to opposing any restrictions to Buncombe County or local government's ability to regulate short-term rentals or online marketplaces. So this is really continuing some of the activity we saw out of the short session just to preserve local government authority. Our next item, similar but different, relates to legislation that would allow some differential property tax treatment of owner occupied properties versus second home or income producing properties.
So and just to, and just to kind of clarify what that means is basically we want to advocate for the idea that for people to have a lower tax rate for their primary home, right? So if you just own one home, it's where you live. In Buncombe County, we would love to say, hey, let's provide a lower tax rate for that to make sure people can afford to live in the community. But we can't do that in North Carolina. If that policy is going to be adopted, the state basically has to say they would approve that for counties across the state. So, so we want to kind of advocate for, for that idea as a way to reduce the property tax burden for homeowners.
Understood and noted. So, you know, at this point, you know, I'll pause. This is our, our first slide, tier one. So these were the items that sort of rose above based on the input that was received. They are policy focused. And so if, if you'd like, we can always come back to these. But if not, no further discussion, then I would shift and continue to move forward into our next slide, which relates to appropriations that fell into that tier one bucket as well. Any additional comments? Would you all like me to proceed? All right. So as we move into appropriations, the slide gets a little bit busier. I'm just going to call out a few of these examples. Again, you know, this slide is all about appropriations. Prior slide was about policy. So in our educated and capable appropriations bucket, our items relate to funding for school personnel salaries. And this could be increases or bonuses. You also see as we skip to bullet three, states funding for K-12 and community college education and related capital needs. So differentiating or being more specific about, you know, not just schools, but also, you know, K-12 and community colleges. And then you see in, in bullet four, an example of, you know, basically making permanent funding related to early childhood that we saw coming out of the pandemic. As we look to resident well-being, here we see additional state funding for affordable housing initiatives. So as an example, the NC workforce housing loan program. We saw some success in the short session on this particular topic. And as such, saw three Buncombe County projects potentially receive additional funding for affordable housing development. Additionally, there, there's an item here regarding the innovation waiver slots waiting list for IDD individuals in Buncombe County community. A lot of discussion about the length of that waiting list and how that can take, you know, years if not decades for people to work through that list. So that showed up as well. Shifting into environmental and energy stewardship. Here we see, you know, state appropriations related to local water sewer extension projects. One example we give here is related to Ferry Road, but there are of course other water and sewer projects. And we reviewed those in your last meeting when MSD was here. State funding for French Broad River water quality improvements. I think that could of course be expanded to include other rivers such as the Swannanoa. You also begin to see variations of the same. So, you know, stream and river debris removal programs as well as earmarks for flood resiliency or stormwater mitigation. So a lot of common threads there. They were separate items in our discussion, so wanted to make sure that we reflected those separately for you today. Finally, in vibrant economy, we see broadband grant funding as a priority as well as state funding for repairs and improvements to McCormick Field, which is of course the, the city owned field here in downtown and home to the Asheville tours. So that brings an end to our appropriations slide for tier one. I'll pause, see if there's any additional thoughts, clarifications, anything of that nature. If not, we'll move into our next slide, which shifts us out of tier one into tier two. And tier two, it's just a way of us separating sort of those items that seem to have garnered more support than those that did not receive as much support. Doesn't mean that these items aren't important, but you'll also notice there's a lot more of them. So moving into policy for tier two. Our first item in educated and capable community refers to legislation for community college workforce programs. So workforce development focus. In vibrant economy, we see legislation to require data sharing and transparency from recipients of broadband grants. So basically internet service providers providing additional data about where they serve. And we also see a policy to change our, to allow rural census tracts within tier three counties to become eligible for state level grants. We are of course a tier three county, so are often not eligible for grants because of our overall, overall wealth in, in the. But we know that some of our rural census tracts may not have the same capabilities as others. Finally, in environmental and, and energy stewardship, we see a number of items. The first relates to financing green energy projects or green banking. We see an emphasis in our second bullet on the commercial building code and in particular around regulations to improve energy efficiency. We also see in coordination with SWANA, which is the solid waste lobbying institution, the establishment of state level bottle exchange program. And then finally, an increase in the enforcement of litter statutes statewide. We have a, a number of items still in the policy bucket on our next slide. This slide is still in tier two policy, but is dedicated to resident well-being where there were lots of ideas generated and wanted to reflect all of those. So because of the number of items on this slide, I'm definitely not going to read off each of those, but I, I will touch on a few of them. We again see preserving or enhancing local government authority to regulate short-term rental properties. We see an item similarly related to affordable housing about state property being transferred to Buncombe County. The authorization of a civilian trash or crash, rather, investigator program for the city of Asheville. A number of items related to procurement and property tax. Here we see a, a change to a very specific statute regarding the procurement of emergency vehicles to sort of speed that process up. The establishment of an elderly or homestead exemption on property tax. And then additionally, back to EMS, the establishment of EMS as an essential service. Next up, still in resident well-being, changes to medical Medicaid reimbursement policy for EMS, some modernization of nine-one-one statutes to move into, to, to be more modern. Additionally, we see some potential changes to Medicaid applicants and the requirement of having a wet signature as opposed to an electronic signature. Restrictions on certain type of drug-related felon's ability to access food stamps. Changes to one sixty D to restore minimum housing standards for, and in the enforcement of, of local governments in particular. And then finally, in our resident well-being bucket, some discussion around raising a minimum, minimum wage for essential workers.
Tim, why is the preserve or enhance local government authority to regulate short-term rental properties on the tier two list since it's on the tier one list?
We probably just wrote it slightly different. I think it's clearly reflected as a tier one, so.
Okay, I, I mean, as long as it's clear, like that's a tier one issue, then great. I wouldn't want that to be confusing.
Chairman Newman, this is Whitney Christiansen. If I can chime in, I think we discussed in our meetings with you all in person a couple of weeks ago, two separate goals, one being a purely defensive goal centered around protecting the authority you have. And the second being an offensive goal whereby we chip away at additional authority you might have over regulating those sorts of programs. And I think the distinction that Tim's probably trying to flag in this PowerPoint is between those two. Because I know in the draft that we sent you all, we had them separated as two different goals because we heard them as two different goals. And strategically, we think, you know, they're, the political dynamics around the two of them would be very different.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So the, the, to, to assure we preserve our existing authorities is the tier one goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Whitney.
Ken, Tim or Avril, can you speak more to the legislation to modernize the nine-one-one statutes? Do you need to get back?
Not today. Glad to provide additional.
I would just be curious about some additional information. We definitely want to modernize ways that we're supporting people in emergencies, so. We definitely want to modernize ways that we're supporting people in emergencies, so would love more information. Thank you.
Definitely.
I have just some initial thoughts. Thanks for putting this all together. There's a lot of really good ideas in here, and it's going to be challenging to narrow that down to that final list. Some initial thoughts, for me, I definitely prioritize broadband water and sewer infrastructure that we're looking at that, and it seems like some of that definitely is kind of in that Tier One. So I'd say those, as well as the water quality, I would include that in that group. On the education aspect, the priority to increase the salaries, and I would say and fully fund state K through 12 and community college personnel. And I think, on your bullet point, you said seek state funding for school personnel salary increases and bonuses. I personally would take out bonuses, because I feel like what has been happening is they're doing bonuses rather than actually increasing the salaries. What they need are increased salaries, not bonuses. That would be my personal input on that one. With the early childhood education, yeah, those are looking good around the funding for the childcare stabilization grants. I think there was some policy and some funding there around early childhood education. And then, clearly, whatever we can do with housing is important. I don't know which specific ones. We'll have to prioritize what we feel really is going to be the most beneficial for housing, but clearly, there's a need there. And then I also want to speak specifically to some farm infrastructure. There's some of that kind of tied in there, but I do, I do really feel like our future also depends on us having resilient farms, and in order for us to have a food-secure region. And there's some things that I think will be coming up that the North Carolina Department of Ag will be making a legislative ask for, so if we're able to, I'd like to see us supportive of that. And some of those things that they'll be asking for is increased funding for farmland preservation, most likely increasing soil and water cost share programs for farmers, as well as some flood mitigation programs, also increasing the salaries for their ag and forestry personnel. I think we have potentially like 15% vacancies, maybe across the state, but when you think about with our forestry personnel, and if we end up with fires and we have that shortage of personnel, and it's a real challenge to live here from what I'm hearing. We know that across the board, but I'm specifically hearing it from ag and forestry as well, that they're having a hard time finding folks to fill vacancies. Also, they'll probably, they should be asking to look at like our WNC farmers market to do an assessment of the core infrastructure there and a capital improvement plan that will also fall under that ask. And we have been talking about and needing a Western North Carolina meat processing facility for years, and we, this is a supply chain issue, or it has multiple issue impacts on our farmers, but also it's a supply chain issue, and we saw that during the pandemic. And for the benefit of this whole region, it would be very helpful if we could actually get that accomplished.
And you anticipate there might be a state legislative proposal to do that, or something through one of the agencies?
I think through the North Carolina Department of Ag, those various things that I just listed likely will be in there, so if we were able to support their ask, then I'm hoping that that would be beneficial.
Yeah. I mean, I think those are all, I mean, certainly everything you expressed, I think those are all good. You know, one thing, just in terms of the legislative agenda, is like, it seems like to the extent some of the initiatives are things that are really unique or particular to Buncombe County or Western North Carolina, is good to elevate those, because, you know, some of these statewide issues, we're just one county that's, you know, kind of saying, hey, I mean, and I'm for doing it, like, on the property tax thing, I think that's great, it might be a long-term process, but like, let's at least speak up for it. But our ability to influence of statewide issues may be limited, but if we say like, hey, we really need a Western North Carolina food processing plant, like, that feels like a place where we could maybe really make a difference. So anyway, I'm for all that, but in particular, if the state could help on that project, that would be great. Yeah, yeah.
I'll just quickly share a perspective on some of the early childhood items, and one other, and wanted to just thank everyone for the work going into this, but we had a chance at our early childhood meeting today to kind of walk through with folks the three items specifically focused on early childhood issues, and just want to express that committee's sort of continued endorsement of these as strong policy priorities as we work to continue expanding access, and I think folks were very pleased to see this on the agenda item. And then just one other one, I've had a chance to talk with many folks on commission, at least very briefly, but hope we can have some more in-depth discussions about the item on the list around the Innovations Waiver Grants and supporting folks in the IDD community. So just kind of wanted to take a moment to note that and say I'll follow up with members of commission about that, but just look forward to continuing to kind of dig in on that question at the state level and better understand what needs for Buncombe County residents are in that area as they're on that waitlist, and whether there are ways we can be responding to those needs as we continue to advocate at the state level. So, thanks.
So Commissioners, at this point, you know, I got one final slide that summarizes a handful of appropriations at the Tier Two level, and some of those Commissioner Wells that you brought up. So I just want to make sure we get through that slide for the benefit of the public, and then I'd like to bring it back and then open it up once again to y'all for some additional discussion, so. In terms of Educated and Capable Community Appropriations, Tier Two, here we see programs at the community college level around essential and emerging technologies, funding in particular there. In Resident Wellbeing, we again see childcare stabilization grants being extended. We see state funding to establish an active aging facility in Western North Carolina, as well as funding to establish a Western North Carolina history museum. On the Environmental and Energy Stewardship side, we see a number of the items Commissioner Wells that you had brought up about cost share programs, local soil and water districts. We see advocacy around staff positions at Pisgahview State Park, but your comment was heard to be potentially broader than just Pisgahview. Additional funding sources for EV charging stations, and then funding around farmland preservation, or the Farmland Preservation Trust Fund in Western North Carolina. Finally, for Vibrant Economy, we see a Western North Carolina meat processing facility, as well as additional funding to small business development in Western North Carolina. So that caps out kind of that initial draft. The big question we have for y'all today is, is there anything missing? And if not, fine. Or on this list, are there items that are in a Tier Two status that you definitely want to see in a Tier One status, or vice versa, where you'd like to take something out of a Tier One into a Tier Two? Ultimately, we want to get this to a point where Warden Smith team has a very discreet list of, you know, five to 10 items that are County Commission priorities that they can very easily communicate to, you know, the General Assembly, and specifically through our legislators that'll be representing us in Raleigh. There will be other items throughout the long session that come up, and Warden Smith, the team will notify us about those items, and you'll have a chance to make your voice heard there as well. But we really want to get to kind of a discreet list, and to Chair Newman's point, you know, what are the items that are truly Buncombe County or Western North Carolina-specific, where our voice doesn't get drowned out, but where it really is kind of a unique ask, where you're using your collateral as best you can, so. I'm going to stop talking.
Well, I guess to your question about elevate, I would say that I would like to elevate the Western North Carolina Meat Processing Facility.
I support that, too. I, you know, I appreciate all the work that's on this. I thought the summary of the Tier Ones and Tier Twos, you know, I mean, I thought y'all did a great job capturing, you know, this is all important, here's the things that seem to be mentioned most frequently in the Tier One areas, so. Yeah, I mean, I know this has got to be kind of further prioritized, but this seems like a great place to be based on where we're at in the process right now.
Sure, I'm glad to see where we are at this point. I think they've done a good job of bringing it, so.
All right, well, any other questions or comments at this point? Tim, thank you to everyone who's worked on this, and Avril, everyone on the staff, and Trifton, Traptan, and Whitney. We really appreciate all the great work. In the last session, I think we were all just really favorably impressed by how much was accomplished, even in just this first session, so we're really looking forward to working with you, so keep us posted, let us know what we can do to help, and we look forward to, you know, trying to see some progress on a lot of these important issues.
Thank you, Chair. It's been wonderful to work with you all as well.
That's great. Well, thank you to the Warden Smith team and to commission for your thoughtful input. In terms of next steps, we will share with you kind of a revised list based on what we discussed today, and we'll be tracking towards adopting formally the legislative agenda at a future commission meeting. We're targeting the January timeframe at this point, and that'll sort of make your agenda public just going into the long session. That way it'll have your endorsement moving forward, so if you have any questions, let us know. Thank you all.
All right, sounds great. All right, I actually don't have my agenda in front of me. What's next on the list? You took my agenda, okay. That was it.
That's it.
So, great job. Were there any other items that people wanted to discuss in the briefing meeting? All right, well, we will adjourn, and we will reconvene at 5 o'clock for the regularly scheduled meeting. Thanks, everyone.